Pardon? For November 12, 2013, meaning it will be called order, the first item of the agenda will be a prayer to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by the Enfield Police Explorers and then Elise Pilch will sing our national anthem. And if you would please rise now while Sister Patricia Marie Iia-Grasso leads us in prayer. You can remain standing during the next few items, if you will.
Before I begin, though, I would like to express in the name of the Felician Sisters our appreciation to our mayor and our town council for all you do to support our programs, our ministries in this town. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. And each day we pray for our council because we say for those who are governing our town, so you're in our prayers. Lord, we meet this evening to ask your blessings upon our mayor and town council members as they begin a new session in guiding the people of the town of Enfield. Guide their hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thoughts, and compassion for those they serve. Give them the wisdom upon their activities so their actions may reach a successful conclusion. They may be of diverse opinions, but may their conclusions be reached for the common good of the people of our town. Keep them from being short-sighted and petty. Give them the humility to seek your will in all they do. May the welfare of the people of Enfield be their only concern in all decisions. May each of them rely upon your guidance and know that whatever they do will reflect the care and concern they have for all who made this evening possible. And we ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Present arms. Forward march.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, if Elise, if you would like to sing, please, for us. This is Elise Pilch. She's going to sing our national anthem for us.
Just put it on, please.
Okay.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes had bright stars through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Up, down, face. Left face.
Please be seated. The next item on the agenda will be the oath of office for our newly-elected constables. And if they would please step to the front, we will take care of that.
First time.
All right, I'll ask you, please, if you'll all raise your right hand. Cindy Anderson, Tisha Callahan, Brian Delano, Albert Harrison, Theodore Plamondon, Dan Post, and Richard Suzinski, who I don't see is here, I'm sorry. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as constable for the town of Enfield to the best of your ability upon penalty or perjury, or so help you God? Okay, congratulations to you all. And then, now, we will give the oath of office to our newly-elected town council people. If they will please rise and raise your right hand. Thomas Arnoni, Joseph Bosco, Gina Alsacala, William J. Edgar, Edward N. Denny, Scott R. Copan, William Lee, Cynthia Mangini, Gregory T. Stokes, Sr., and Donna H. Suzak. Do you all solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the town council for the town of Enfield to the best of your ability upon penalty of perjury, or so help you God?
I do.
Okay, congratulations to all of you, too. We will now have roll call. Councilman Arnoni.
Here.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Sicala.
Here.
Councilman Edgar.
Here.
Councilman Denny.
Here.
Councilman Hall.
Councilman Copan.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
Councilman Suzak.
Here.
We have ten members present, one is absent. And now, the next item on the agenda will be the election of our mayor. And the floor is now open for nominations. Yes?
Madam Clerk, this evening I have the privilege of placing Scott Copan's name into nomination for Town Council Chairman and Mayor of our community. Scott continues to demonstrate to all of us that the needs and the priorities of our town are respectfully considered first when business is brought before this council. I'm quite certain that if Scott continues as mayor of the coming term, he will continue to provide official and informal avenues and opportunities for residents from all of our town's neighborhoods to engage the municipality and weigh in on the governing process. Likewise, to my colleagues up here on the dais, under Scott's leadership, members of this body are certain to be heard, they are certain to have their ideas considered and explored, and they are certain to be kept well-informed of leadership's intentions and communications. Scott's been an effective advocate for reforms that the council has been successful in adopting over the last several years. And through his leadership roles that he's taken on at the regional level, Scott has the ear and the trust of elected officials throughout the state of Connecticut. Lastly, Scott understands that we're all here temporarily. We're fulfilling our duty to serve our town. But Scott realizes that if our collective futures are to be meaningful, we also need to be teaching others how to get involved and carry the torch forward. Whether it's the civic pride that he helps develop in scouts or in schoolchildren, or it's the leadership skills that Scott helps develop each year in countless individuals on the town green during the Independence Day celebration, or helping parents and residents navigate the everyday nuts and bolts of the municipality, Scott's investing energy and passion to endeavor -- excuse me, he's investing the energy and passion to see each endeavor through because Scott knows that the seeds he's helping to plant and tend will be bountiful in the future. I can think of no better legacy than that of equipping others in our community to understand how they themselves can develop their own talents and help make Enfield a place we're proud to call home. Scott is quite simply Enfield's cheerleader and citizen advocate in chief. I hope my colleagues join me this evening in also naming Scott mayor for another productive two terms.
I want to second that.
Thank you. Are there any more nominations? And then I would call for a motion to close nominations, please.
Motion to close nominations.
Okay, is there a second? All right, now, we will have -- oh, yes, you need to vote on closing nominations. If you will raise your hand, if you're in favor of that, please. Thank you. You can -- I can't wait to turn this over. You know that. All right. And if now, we will have a roll call vote on this nomination. Councilman Arnoni.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Bosco.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Sicala.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Edgar.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Denny.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Copan.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Lee.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Mangini.
Scott Copan.
Councilman Stokes.
Mary Ann Dick's son, Scott Copan.
Councilman Suzak.
Scott Copan.
We have ten in favor, none against, no abstentions. Congratulations, Mayor.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much. And before I get to my prepared remarks, I just want to give a special thank you to Sister Patricia and all the sisters at the Felician Adult Daycare Center, the Enfield Police Explorers, and our special family friend, Elise Pilch, for being very special parts of this ceremony. State Senator Minority Leader John McKinney, Senator John Kissel, Representative Alexander, Enfield Republican Town Committee Chairman Turner, and Enfield Democratic Town Committee Chairman Thompson, fellow town councilmen, town employees, family members, friends, and fellow residents of Enfield, thank you for being here this evening at the organizational meeting of the new Enfield Town Council. Being re-elected as the mayor of the town of Enfield continues to be quite an honor. As I look back six years ago to the beginning of this incredible experience, I can honestly say that I truly did not understand in its entirety the roles and responsibilities of this office. But as I'm known to do, I jump in feet-first and quickly learned of the responsibilities and obligations of the office. And for the most part, it has been tremendous and a very rewarding experience. Even a few short months ago, I did not think that I would be here, but instead thought I'd be joining the audience in welcoming a new town council. The past couple of months have been long and hard, but in their own right, both tremendous and rewarding, and humbling, to say the least. Thank you, Enfield. Today, I still look forward with great anticipation and enthusiasm to the responsibilities and obligations that come with this office, while also understanding and respecting the role of mayor as outlined by our town charter. No individual can attain such a position without a great deal of support from a very wide range of people. And I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge those that have made an impact on my life, both personally and politically. I first want to thank my fellow town councilmen for selecting me again to serve as mayor. I believe that the trust and confidence you have once again placed in me must continue to be earned over the course of this term. Through open communication, constant dialogue, honest discussion, and constructive debate, this eleven-member town council will continue to be very effective. We may not agree on every decision made, but you have my promise that all information will be shared equally, that sufficient time will be given to allow for needed questioning and research, and that discussion and debate will be encouraged. Welcome back, Bill, Carol, Greg, Joey, Red, Cindy, and Tom. Welcome aboard, Donna, Gina, and Ed. Red, as the new Democratic minority leader, I look forward to working closely with you over this coming term. I next want to thank the voters of Enfield's District Three that elected me to ten consecutive terms on the town council. Your support each election was very humbling, and I hope I lived up to your expectations by working hard to best represent the district and the town as a whole. I also need to thank, for the first time, the voters across town that elected me as one of seven at-large town councilmen. Your support on Election Day was absolutely mind-boggling. I now know that I must work extremely hard to maintain that support, trust, and confidence you have placed in me. No candidate can be successful without the support of their party and numerous campaign volunteers. I want to thank the entire Enfield Republican Town Committee, our chairman, Mary Ann Turner, Treasurer Jason Jones, and our entire team of candidates for your hard work, tremendous efforts, and time commitments during this past campaign. Please understand that your support is appreciated and never taken for granted. Six years ago, I spoke about the many terrific people that I had the opportunity to serve with on the town council, and I dedicated that evening in memory of Mary Lou Strom, my mentor. And it still brings -- it still gets me choked up. Mary Lou served this town with distinction, and I committed myself to lead as she did. She taught me that leadership is much more than making a decision. Leadership is the process of making that decision. Leadership involves information gathering, discussion, debate, consensus building, and understanding the impact of the decision. To this day, these principles instilled in me by Mary Lou continue to guide how I serve as mayor. Many people comment that I have made Mary Lou proud, which, to me, is the highest form of accomplishment that I could ever receive. I continue to be amazed at what I have witnessed firsthand over these past six years by countless people working hard to make our town a better place to live, raise a family, educate a child, earn a living, and enjoy the natural surroundings that Enfield offers. As I said in the past, serving as mayor affords me that coveted front-row seat to a community in action, silently going about your business as a community volunteer. This is what makes Enfield such a special place to call home. I thought about creating a list, but I knew I'd get in trouble and leave some very important organization out, whether they're civic, political, religious. So tonight, I dedicate this evening to all the volunteers across town. Together, we make Enfield, and we're all volunteers here. Together, we make Enfield what it truly is, a community in action willing to assist thy neighbor and to make our community a home. To the employees of the town of Enfield, the best. I want you to know that your service to this community continues to be appreciated and respected. Public-sector employment remains very demanding and at times unpleasant. It is my hope that this town council will continue to provide the environment where initiative is encouraged. We want to hear your opinions and priorities. We want you to help establish the new goals for our town. We are on the front lines -- you are on the front lines, we're not. You are on the front lines, and we have a good understanding of what this community needs. Working together as we have over the past six years, we can continue to be successful. I want to thank my friends, who I consider my extended family, for your support and encouragement over the years. Many of my friends are here this evening. Some have been friends since high school. Some were neighbors or coworkers. Some I met through the J.C.'s, the Fourth of July Celebration, politics, or other community service activities. You are too numerous to mention. You know who you are, and thank you for being here again to share in this special occasion. Finally, to my family, a very special thanks. My mom's here tonight. My dad's home watching on E.T.V. Hi, Dad. Dad's had a rough couple past months, but he's home and he's doing much better, and thought it was better to stay at home in his easy chair. So hi, Dad, and thank you, I love you. My brother Todd's here. The rest of the family, typical, like your families, they're off running in fifty million directions, getting kids to different events. But thank you so much. Your patience and understanding have allowed me to pursue public service. Juggling family activities with meeting schedules and community events is at times difficult, but you know that this is one of my passions, so thank you. In closing, may I emphasize that I do not take the responsibility of being mayor of Enfield lightly, and I hope I can continue to live up to your expectations. Thanks again for your trust and confidence. To serve in this position is truly an honor. Thank you very much. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the appointment of Deputy Mayor, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's good to see everybody here tonight, and we thank you for being here. It is my privilege to nominate for Deputy Mayor for this term, Mr. Bill Lee. I have known Bill for over ten years. I had hair back then. Bill has proven himself to be a dedicated public servant. He is a wonderful husband and father, and I say that because some of us up here serve the council. Our children are grown, and I always compliment those that have young children at home because the time demands are sometimes great, and we want to thank their families for that, their wives and children. But Bill is a dedicated servant. He's a person who studies every issue, and I have observed him to be a person of detail. I have served with him on the Development Service Committee. He is our chairman, and I can tell you, when I walk into that room for a meeting, he is well-informed and informs us of the issues that are at hand, and I'm impressed with that. He's a consensus builder. Sometimes when we have debates and we have disagreements and issues become somewhat tense, he's the person that is a go-to person to find common ground between all individuals. And he is a person who is known in this town because he was raised here. He went to school here. He's lived his life here and chosen us as his town. And I think also he would be a great complement to our mayor, as them two together are a great team to work together along with Minority Leader Red Eggers. And so I want to, at this time, place into nomination our good friend and one of Enfield's own, Mr. Bill Lee.
I would like to second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
I move the nomination.
Motion by Councilman Stokes, seconded by Councilman Suzak to close nominations. By show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Yeah. Roll call, please.
Councilman Arnoni.
Bill Lee.
Councilman Bosco.
Bill Lee.
Councilman Sicala.
Bill Lee.
Councilman Edgar.
Bill Lee.
Councilman Denny.
Bill Lee.
Mayor Copan.
Bill Lee.
Councilman Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Oh, um, Bill Lee.
Councilman Stokes.
Bill Lee.
And Councilman Suzak.
Bill Lee.
We have ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you very much to my colleagues for the honor and privilege, and certainly the trust to serve as Vice Chair for the next two years. I look forward to working with everyone on both sides of the aisle to really get a lot of things done. There is no shortage of work ahead of us, so I am looking forward to it. I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank my wife Katie and my children Audrey, Jason, and Brianna. As Greg alluded, all four of them are out doing various things tonight, so they're going to be making a visit to the chambers at our next meeting. But they have been a huge source of inspiration and patience and have listened to the issues just as we have on many, many occasions, often late at night. So I do thank them for their support and their assistance. One thing that I wanted to just note that I shared with members of my town committee on Election Night, I've seen this council the last few terms really be very effective at setting their goals and coming back and circling around and checking themselves against the goals. So I guess I wanted to share that with the public tonight, that the first course of action for this council will be another round of goal-setting, and I'm sure Scott will share some more details about that in the coming weeks. But it really does ground us and the public in understanding where we're headed and what we can accomplish together. And once we set those goals, you know, certainly with everyone's input and assistance, I want to call on the public to be very open in chiming in and helping us circle around and check on how we're doing and how we're -- hold us to our promises and the progress. So thank you again for the honor and look forward to a great term. I do want to read a note from Councilman Carol Hall. Carol is in Mexico on a long-planned family vacation, and she did email me today a note that she asked to be read. So first and foremost, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish -- to say, I wish, I was with you all tonight to celebrate the beginning of another two years serving our town. Fred and I are away on a much-needed vacation that has been planned for a long time. I wanted to thank all the great folks of Enfield for supporting me once again to serve them. I promise to always do my best for this great town of ours. I would like to thank my family who understand the need for me to serve, knowing how much I love it, and putting up with all the long hours this job takes to do properly. I'd like to say I am truly disappointed to miss this momentous day because we are fortunate to have, and I wish she didn't write this, our amazing mayor back, and equally exciting, the ability to see Bill Lee nominated as Deputy Mayor. I have always supported I have always supported Scott as mayor, he is an amazing man, and she did write this, I didn't.
I noticed you highlighted that part, though.
All right, he's an okay guy and gives something to the town. I have learned a lot from him over the years, and I'm proud to call him my friend. The fact that we get to nominate Bill Lee as Deputy Mayor makes me equally as proud. I wanted Bill as Deputy Mayor for two terms now, and my wish will finally be realized this term. Yes, she did write that. Yes, she did write that. A mayor that gives 110% of himself always, and a Deputy Mayor that has always put his town first. A leadership team that this whole town can be proud of. Again, I wish I could be there to celebrate with you, but I congratulate all and welcome our newcomers, and look forward to serving with all another two years. From Carol. Any comments from the council before we get into the business? Councilman Arnoney?
Yeah, congratulations first, and I also like to thank our Town Committee for giving me the opportunity to run, the voters, my wife and soulmate, my four children, all of who were eligible to vote this year, and now my three grandchildren for the couple of times I've been late for birthday parties, doing the town's business. And God bless Enfield, and I really look forward to the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Stokes.
I first want to thank Tom's four children for voting for me in this past election. I just want to thank my wife and family who are here tonight, and one of my granddaughters has came in. I thank you for your support, and for my lovely wife, who is just my confidant and strong supporter, and just my best friend, and so I want to thank her. And I want to thank my colleagues up here. I look forward to working with you all, many I know very well, some I'm going to get to know. And I just want to also thank that we have this evening Pat Crowley. I want to thank him for his service on the Town Council. He will be missed. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Ken Nelson, who served faithfully, and I want to thank Tom Kinsler, who are not here this evening. The voters choose, or we make our own decisions, but I think it is public service, and I think we need to thank those who have served in the previous term, and look forward to working with those that are here, and of course, to Bill and of course Scott, my good friend. And I look forward to serving with you and the rest of the team, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. So how does this sound? Councilman Sikala.
Thank you. Very briefly, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank my husband and my children who are here today. He's been more than supportive, and he will, I don't know if he knows what I'm in for or what he's in for, but to the rest of my family and friends, thank you very much. The Democratic Town Committee for their support to me, and all my other supporters, especially to the voters out there. I'm testament that every vote does count. To Pat Crowley, I was really looking forward to serving alongside of you, not in your replacement, so I hope I am a worthy replacement to you. And I'm looking forward to the next couple of years. I hope to serve well, and I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you, Mayor Copeland. Congratulations again, Scott and Bill. It's a pleasure to serve with you and the rest of my colleagues. Yes, Pat will be missed. We also have new Donna, welcome Donna, Gina, Ed. I do want to thank the voters, especially the voters for coming out and expressing their duties and rights as citizens of Enfield to vote. And I also want to point out that my two grandchildren are here, running back and forth, and I'm very proud of my family and thank my family for their years of support. I think this is my ninth term, but as Scott pointed out in part of his beautiful speech that he gave, we do lead by example, and I do plan to lead very honorably, as I have in the past, and I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilman Edgar.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you. I'd like to thank Bill Lee. I've been associated with the council since 1995, and I believe we've come a long way from that time. I believe you were there two years ahead of me. And the difference you see in the town is tremendous. For me, the distance for the town has come a long way. When I first went in the Army, there were no traffic lights on Route 5. And I'd like to thank my family, and I don't believe any of them are here today. All seven of them, one of which is in a nursing home for after almost 23 years in the Marine Corps, and I don't think he'll ever get out. But there are seven of them, there are 16 grandchildren, some of whom are of voting age already, and 13 grandchildren, great-grandchildren, that are coming along the way. It's a pleasure to serve the town. I thank the Town Committee, I thank all of the citizens of Enfield, regardless to which party they belong. I have the town in my best interest, and that will always be. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say thank you first to my husband who's in the audience, and to the R T C, to the people of Enfield who have shown their support of me, to my children who have grown up, flown a nest, and become functional adults. I'd like to thank the Enfield School System for that. Also, I'd like to thank people who showed, I guess, a confidence in me that I didn't necessarily have in myself, and I hope that over these next two years that I can do what people expect of me and be the Town Councilperson that I would like to be. Thank you.
Yes, I want to start off thanking my wife, my children, who got very excited when they didn't think I was going to run. I want to thank all the voters of District 1 that supported me. It's a real honor to be here. I hope I never let you down, and just as I said, I'm going to do the best I can to worry about everybody in my district, and also the rest of the taxpayers in the Town of Enfield, and try to do what's right every time. Thank you.
You're going to have to, Ed. Councilman Denny.
If you're last, they'll always remember you. I want to thank my family, they're all here today, my grandchildren, some of them who live with me. I'm overwhelmed. I wanted to take this job because I thought I could serve the town, but I've had phone calls from people. I came up through the ranks, so to speak. My grandfather peddled fruit here in 1906 and '07 and '08. I'm very proud of my heritage, and I'm very proud to be an Enfield resident. I'll do the best I can for you. I'll try my best, and I want to thank all the voters in District 4 on both sides of the aisle, because I know a lot of Republicans voted for me also. Thank you.
I do want to take this opportunity to recognize again some of our special guests that are here this evening. We do have in the audience State Senator John McKinney. And for folks that don't know, John is the Minority Leader in the Connecticut State Senate. His colleague, our State Senator John Kissel. Representing the 58th House District, Representative David Alexander. We do have quite a few of our current and newly-elected Board of Education members, and to all of you, welcome as well. Our probate judge is here, Tim Keeney. And congratulations to all of our newly-elected constables as well. Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations and welcome. And knowing that our town is a lot bigger than just the representatives for Enfield and Enfield government, we do have two fire chiefs here as well, and I want to recognize Chief Frank Alamo from Thompsonville. And Chief Earl Preventure from North Thompsonville. And if I missed anyone, I apologize. Item number nine is appointment of the Town Attorney, which is going to move to the next council agenda. I think it will just move. And then, item 10 is a resolution to set the meeting dates, and the resolution reads as follows. Whereas the Town Charter, Chapter 3, Section 4 provides in pertinent part that, quote, "At the first meeting of council following the town election, the Town Council shall fix the time and place of its regular meeting, which shall not be less than once each month", unquote. Therefore, be it resolved that the first regular meeting of the 2013-2014 Town Council be held, I think that should be 2013-2015 Town Council, be held on Monday, November 18, 2013, in the council chambers at 7:00 P.M. And be it further resolved that thereafter, the council shall meet in the regular session on the first and third Monday of each month, excepting the month of November, at 7:00 P.M. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, or at any other place as the council may designate. In the month of November, the council shall meet on the Monday immediately following Election Day and the third Monday of the month. When Monday is a holiday, the regular meeting shall be held on the following day at the same hour unless otherwise provided for by motion. The day, time, and place of the meeting may be changed by a majority vote. Is there a motion and a second? Motion by Councilman Edgar, seconded by Councilman Stokes. Any discussion on the resolution? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? No, do we need to do roll call?
It's up to you, Mayor.
No, we should do roll call, sorry. So may we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Arnoney.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
Councilman Sikala.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Denny.
Four.
Mayor Copeland.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
Councilman Suzak.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
He can come up here.
That'd be my grandson, folks.
Next item, appointment of committee, three members to review the policy procedures for the Town Council meetings. What we traditionally do is adopt the existing policy and procedures and appoint the three members. So prior to approving the resolution, the three members of the Policy and Procedure Review Committee are Tom Arnoney, Donna Suzak, and Greg Stokes. And the resolution, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the policy and procedure for Enfield Town Council meetings dated January 17, 2012. By Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnoney.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
Councilman Sikala.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Denny.
Four.
Mayor Copeland.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Lee.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
Councilman Suzak.
Four.
We have 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
That concludes the business of the new Town Council. What I'd ask is everyone in the audience to please stand, and Elise Pilch is going to come forward and sing "America the Beautiful."
Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountains majesties above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful, for patriot dream that sees beyond thy ears, thine alabaster cities gleam, undimmed by human tears. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? By Councilman Stokes, seconded by Councilman Mangini, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all, have a good evening. (applause)